Hello, I'll call this emergency meeting of the Pawtucket School Committee to order at 6:00 PM. Ms. Listley, please take a walk off.
Mr. Ella, Mr. Charbonneau, Mr. Knight, Mr. Marino, Ms. Dubby.
Here, please rise with pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, we have one item on our agenda. I will read it in its entirety. Pursuant to the Island General Laws 42-46-6 of the Open Meetings Act, majority of the Pawtucket School Committee affirmatively voted to hold an emergency meeting to discuss at the late opening of the Henry J. Winters Elementary School due to an unexpected occurrence related to a public safety issue that requires immediate attention for members of the public and to discuss the issues that created the need for an emergency meeting. So, today was the first day of school. I know my daughters were both very happy to return to their schools. It was an exciting day, but obviously this hung over the entire day for me, as I'm sure it did for everyone in this district. Last Friday, we, the members of this committee and the administration toward Henry J. Winters, we were assured by Gilbane and Colliers while we were there that we were on track to open this school on Wednesday. It was a day of excitement. We got to see teachers setting up classrooms. We did see some construction materials, and I know myself and other members pointed to things and said, you know, this pile of this, this, that's gonna be gone, that's all set. This place where there's a missing tile, that's gonna be all set. And like I said, it was a very exciting day for this committee to tour that school. And we knew there were gonna be a few things delayed. We knew that the gym wasn't gonna be quite ready. There was contingency plans to have the students have gym outside or help in the classroom. We knew the kitchen wasn't gonna be ready and that there were gonna be bag lunches for the students for a couple of weeks. But once again, we were assured multiple times by Colliers and Gilbane that this school was opening on Wednesday. And so I know I wasn't the only committee member on Tuesday afternoon to be shocked to get a text that said, that recall, that said that we were aware that there was a problem and that we were not going to be able to open Winters the next day. So that was, like I said, only a little over 24 hours ago that we were notified of that. It was frustrating and shocking and it definitely, like I said, my children were very excited to go back to their schools today at Pawtucket, and I know a lot of teachers were. I know 15 of our buildings had wonderful first days back. But it is very upsetting that we were not able to open Winters today. So I, at this meeting, I hope to learn more about why that occurred, how that occurred, how we were not aware that this was even a possibility until Tuesday afternoon, and what our steps are moving forward. So I will allow other committee members, if they'd like to say something now, and then we obviously can hear from Colliers and Gilbane to figure out where we are and how this occurred. Mr. Charbonneau?
Thank you, Madam Chair of the College on the School Committee. I had requested this emergency meeting to address the Winters community and to provide them with a timeline on the chain of events that brings us here today. Before we discuss the backup battery issue, I think it's important to acknowledge where we came from. I've been involved with the rebuilding of Winters since before Winters was even on the master plan. I, along with Ms. Grant and Mr. Knight, toured Winters five years ago. As the chairman at the time, I met with then Superintendent De Senzo and brought to this committee an amendment to the master plan that put Winters in the position to be our first ever ground-up rebuild. When we started here two years ago, we all knew at the groundbreaking, this was a tight schedule. Knowing that, we assembled what I believe to be the best talent available for school construction. SLAM Collaborative was brought on board and drew the design plans. Gilbane was selected as the CMAR. We formed a strategic partnership with the laborers union through the execution of a project labor agreement. And as a side note, when we needed additional labor at this site, the laborers union stepped up big time for us. And of course, our team at Colliers, that have seen us through every project in this eight years since I've joined the committee. Their professionalism, their commitment to our students, and the belief in what they're doing make them invaluable partners to us. So in short, we have the best-in-class team working on this. If anyone tuned in thinking this would be a blame fest, I'm sorry to disappoint you, but you won't hear that from me. I have the utmost respect for the work this team has done. There's been a lot of conversation in the city lately about global supply chain shortages and building challenges as means to spiraling costs and project escalation. That seems to be okay for some projects, but a three-school-day delay has some in the city looking for a pound of flesh. To the 485 students and their families in the entire Winters community, we missed opening school by three school days, and for that, I'm truly sorry. You should also know that as chairman of the Facilities Committee, this delay occurred under my watch. And I want you to hear that from me. I assure you it was not for lack of effort, and I believe you will reach the same conclusion after hearing the facts of this. For anyone to sit and try and blame the superintendent or the contractors, the laborers, our team at Gilbane, or Colliers, or SLAM, that just isn't fair. Beyond that, it's not accurate. So I appreciate the Winters community for tuning in. I look forward to a robust discussion and hearing a detailed timeline of events, and I trust the members of our community to form their own opinions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Charbonneau. Before we bring up on Gilbane and Colliers, is there anyone else from the committee who'd like to speak? Mr. Knight?
I was extremely disappointed to hear that we are not, we're not able to open today. However, it's my understanding that several different ideas to back up the fire system came up, and that other ideas came up. And it was amazing to see on YouTube today, the mayor stated he was, had, needed more time to do exactly what we had asked yesterday in the event of this problem. It was amazing. And to blame it and to say there's a silo at the school department is a misnomer. It's misinformation. And it makes me really... I'll say it, it makes me sick that the mayor has such a dislike for the current superintendent that he didn't promote the ideas that he promoted today at the YouTube interview. If those had come out yesterday, or if he had agreed to them yesterday, pardon me, we would have been open today. Knowing that we called school off today, Gilbane put all their people back in to finish everything that wasn't finished as quickly as possible. Now, most of the stuff that hasn't been finished was most reckless. However, the fire alarm system is something that I started jumping on when Hans Delief was the school superintendent. And they hadn't been upgraded in years. We have, as a school committee and as a facilities committee, upgraded every single fire alarm to state-of-the-art fire alarm systems since I've been here, and we've kept on top of it every single year. To say that we, or the superintendent, or anybody in the administration is responsible for not notifying the mayor, I've got some bad news for the mayor. He runs the city of Pawtucket, not the Pawtucket School Department. We the school committee, not by the mayor. So please, Don, keep your hands off the school department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. So, at this point, I would like, if I, if I don't see any other hands, I would like to call up on Colliers and Gilbane, either together or at one time, so that we can understand better the timeline of how things happened and how we are moving forward. I know that, you know, we've received emails, but I think that the public needs to hear exactly what the holdup was and what solutions were proposed, what was rejected, and what we are doing moving forward. Thank you. And please just introduce yourselves. I know we know you, but... I'm sorry, Mr. Charbonneau?
Could I ask that they, they all come up together? Gilbane and our whole team that's, that's been on there. I know I was in conversations with Tony and Holly multiple times yesterday, and this morning with Holly. So I think it, it flows better this way with having them kind of explain what caused the delay, and then we can work backwards from there, a bit of a timeline. Because there's, obviously, it's frustrating for everybody, Gilbane and Colliers included. But there's a lot of disinformation out in the community as to what, what drove this. So if we could do that, I think it would be, we can just kind of walk it through step by step on the timeline.
Thank you. So, yes, please all come up together and let's go through this.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Derek Austin. I am the Senior Director of Project Management Services at Colliers here in Rhode Island. I should open by saying we are absolutely heartbroken that Winters did not open today and feel very bad about the situation. We are pleased to be able to take you through the timeline of events that forced this to occur, as well as what we're doing to immediately correct the situation. I think perhaps the best thing to do is introduce all of my colleagues that stand here with me this evening, both from within Colliers and Gilbane. And then because the site is still under the care and control of Gilbane until we open, they will begin recounting what happened that caused the delay, how we got there, and what we're doing now to fix it. So with that, I'm gonna pass it to Holly Diner, my colleague at Colliers.
Holly Diner and Colliers, thank you all. It's wonderful to see you again. We were heartbroken, and we're very excited about the school. It's absolutely gorgeous. To walk in here now and see what the teachers and the students will have over the years to come is just amazing. The timeline, and we have all worked day and night. As you know, Colliers is the OPM from the designing and now construction. You know, cost, quality, and schedule is what we manage. And we have done everything in our power to this point to deliver that school to you. So again, I, you know, would like Gilbane to run through this and you can understand the sequence of events and how we ended up here. But I can say, this school is absolutely gorgeous. I have been in there every day for weeks and watching the teachers in their classrooms and seeing what they have versus where they've been is just... Although there's this three-day delay, I'm hoping by next Tuesday, when they're in that school, this will be, you know, something that moves fast and I'll forget that this occurred. Again, let me introduce Tony. Okay.
My name is Steve DuBelle. I'm the Senior Vice President for Gilbane. I just wanna say, we regret the disappointment and hardship this delay has caused by the community, especially the children and their families. I personally wanted to address each of you tonight. This project, we fought through a pandemic, through supply chain issues and other delays, and we always worked together as a team to get things done. You know, our workforce has worked long days and weekends the entire summer to make sure that we could deliver on time. And to have it come down to a fire alarm issue, quite frankly, is very disappointing. We've done our best to mitigate those impacts and appreciate the efforts and outstanding support of the parties associated with this project. We've addressed the issue, and we are confident that we will pass the Fire Marshal review this Saturday morning. Tony's gonna go into those details for you. We do wanna note that while these are unfortunate circumstances, the school and all of you have seen is absolutely amazing. It fills me with pride to be part of this project. And although this is an unfortunate circumstance, it's just an amazing investment to the future of your students. You have our full support and intention, and with that, I'll turn it over to Tony.
Tony, where are you? Gilbane, I think I know all of you. So I'm gonna read through something I've written, and then we can talk through the details and you can ask some questions about it. So, a short list of action items was identified yesterday by the Fire Marshal and the building official. All of the items that were identified were scheduled to be addressed yesterday, with the exception of the battery test malfunction for the firing unit. The fire alarm system had, system had been tested previously, but the battery test can only be done at the time with the Fire Marshal inspection. Its malfunction was unpredictable. We've never experienced that previously. I've never experienced it in my career. As of today, the battery has been reprogrammed. It's currently being recharged. The timeline required to retest encompasses 84 hours, a 24-hour charge, and a 60-hour rundown test. The Fire Marshal and the building official are both scheduled to return to the building Saturday morning to witness the test and confirm reinspection. All other items were completed yesterday or were in the process of being completed yesterday when, given the planned delay in school opening, the decision was made to stop. The stopped items are now proceeding during the available time to be completed in a more permanent fashion than our plan to complete this Friday. The Fire Marshal and the building official are scheduled to re-inspect Saturday. We do not have any contractors scheduled to be on-site on Saturday, so the reinspection occurs without interruption. And we do not have contractors scheduled towards the remainder of the weekend to ensure that nothing is disturbed after the reinspection and prior to school opening on Tuesday. Jay, you asked for some specifics on timeline. That was my general statement. Would you like me to run through those, or do you wanna ask a specific question?
I do have some questions.
Sure.
So, these... And again, being as sensitive as this is and as frustrating as it is for all of us, there's a lot of conversation out there in the city about how we got here. So, the, the battery backup system was installed last week sometime, correct?
It was installed multiple weeks ago. We did a pre-test on the system on the 22nd and 23rd. The battery system was installed then.
So the pot didn't arrive yesterday and get put in? Okay. You said in your career, Tony, that you've never seen a battery backup malfunction or failed a test. Has anyone in their careers? I mean, we got some heavy-handed school construction. So we've, we've never had a... Is there data, or what gives you a level of confidence that that same test will be positive in our favor come Saturday morning?
So, the root cause of that issue was identified within the fire alarm panel. It was corrected. It was reviewed by two parties to confirm that that was the issue and confirm that it was corrected, and went back on recharge. So it's been checked and double-checked to reconfirm that the repair addressed the issue and that recharge will occur, and the rundown test will be confirmed.
So, and I apologize if I need to...
Mr. Charbonneau, because I, this, Mr. Charbonneau has done an excellent job leading the Facilities Subcommittee. I don't sit on that Subcommittee, so sometimes, you know, I have to have things explained to me a few different ways to kind of understand exactly what this is doing in our building. So, am I correct that the fire alarm system is working fine? If anything happened in this building, the fire alarm would function as it should. That was all okay. We had, we were all up on that. That the only area that failed was if Winters were to lose power, there is a backup battery that would then be used to ensure that the fire alarm functions. It was the backup battery that, that failed the test. And essentially, it has to be able to hold a charge for 60 hours. In other words, it has to be able to, what is that, two and a half days, three, almost three days? Yeah, two and a half days. It has to be able to hold a charge for two and a half days. If it doesn't, it fails that test. But I know yesterday, I mean, I was a little baffled that there wasn't any workaround that we could use to at least put students in, since what we're saying is, the only safety concern is if this school loses power, its fire alarm won't work. So, could we use a generator? I know Mr. Charbonneau suggested, can we have a generator on-site to ensure the school doesn't lose power? Can we, can we, you know, just say that we are gonna pay a fire duty to be on-site at that school to ensure that if this school loses power and there's, there's someone there to ensure that we weren't just gonna evacuate the students immediately because we know this was safe, that it doesn't have a fire alarm system? So these were suggestive. I mean, did you feel like they were good suggestions from your professional standpoint? And do you have any idea why those weren't accepted as options?
So, I can't comment on why they aren't accepted. I can tell you all the things you suggested were discussed, but I, I can't tell you why they're not accepted. That's not my expertise.
But am I correct in my understanding of what this, what this failure was? Was it backup battery to function if the school loses power? Okay, thank you. Mr. Charbonneau?
So, in, in keeping with that, Tony, so I know, you know, again, there's conversation about we, you know, we purposely waited to the last minute to notify folks and so forth. And so, to the Winters community, I wanna speak to the fact that I received a phone call on the, on the conference line with the superintendent, with Tony, with Holly, roughly at 1:30, 2 o'clock yesterday afternoon, notifying me as Facilities Chair of the issue. Obviously, it was, it was frustrating and, and... But as the team has done all along in these projects, we said, okay, let's troubleshoot it. What's the resolution? We offered a fire watch, four firefighters at, at the school department expense, an apparatus paid for, rented from the city by the school department. We offered a portable generator that would have encompassed the entire building, not just the, the backup battery. I think I suggested that in addition to the four firefighters, we get a private security firm as an additional set of four eyes there to, to kind of walk the building. And this was gonna be 24/7 to allow us to open yesterday, conduct the test, the fix, on the, on the battery backup, and, and go on with the school year. All of those recommendations from me were unilaterally just dismissed, or, or, or they weren't an option. From when I was notified at 2:00 in the afternoon till the team reconvened on the, on the phone at 4:00, it was at my request of the superintendent to give us a couple of hours to try and work this problem, to try and find a resolution that, obviously, the safety and health of our students is paramount to everybody in this town, to everybody in this city. So we can certainly all agree that that was the focus of everybody. When it became apparent that any of the options that we presented were dismissed by the city building inspector, I again, on a call with our team, asked, okay, we, we need to notify the community ASAP. I think this committee should know that during that two-and-a-half-hour window, we had set a hot stop at 5:00. If, if we didn't have reasonable options and discussions, we, we were canceling school at 5:00. So, the pot didn't arrive yesterday. The pot was tested yesterday, and as soon as our team was aware of the test failure, again, with the amount of experience in school construction standing in front of us, none of them have seen this test fail in their, in their careers. So the likelihood of us having an issue with that test was probably, and I, I won't speak for you, but was probably very low that we weren't gonna pass that test. All of this was discussed, and the plan was, was implemented. And the superintendent sent out the notification to the Winters family. We were in consultation with the administration, I believe, throughout this process. And as I sit here today, I, I wonder how we've gotten to this point in Pawtucket where we cannot reasonably disagree with each other on policy or process or what, and then move on from it? You know, the people feeling the brunt of this are the Winters families. We committed to getting the building open on time. We didn't deliver that. It's on us. It's on me as the Facilities Chair. It's on this committee. It's on our team. Nobody is shrinking from that responsibility. But we need to make sure that we operate and we explain to the community the facts of the matter. We can't just shoot from the hip with, with assumptions or, or we think it may have been, this is what happened. So Tony, in the, in the timeline as, as we go, you, the battery backup was installed weeks ago.
Correct.
Right? And we, we have to give it 60 hours. So can you explain to everybody why towards the end of the construction we hadn't tested it yet because of the duct coverings and the dust covers and so forth?
So, so there is a fire alarm pre-test that was conducted the 22nd and 23rd. The battery backup is not part of the pre-test. It's a functional test for all the devices. All the devices worked perfectly. The battery rundown test is specifically required to be witnessed by the Fire Marshal. They have to witness that the system power was taken down at a specific time, and it reaches 60 hours, and then they have to inspect that it can still sound at the end of 60 hours. And, and that timeline, the power was removed from the panel Saturday night at 8:30 PM in anticipation of Tuesday morning at 8:00 AM having it inspected. So exactly 60 hours later, when the Fire Marshal was scheduled to arrive to inspect, that 60 hours would have expired and we could have inspected the system. So that timing was specifically set with a date with our experience that failure wasn't an option. That was the plan.
So, if we move on from the battery, you know, I, I only received a, a six or seven item punch list from the building inspector in the city. And my initial read of it was, boy, it's, this sounds like it was all stuff that was gonna be addressed, tested. The exterior ladders going up to the roof, I assume we left them there because we were bringing materials down from the roof. The combustibles that were left in the vestibule, I'm assuming we used the vestibule as a staging area, bringing all the building materials down from the upper floors, housing it in the vestibule, and then we were gonna have it potted off there. The community brings up an interesting point of, from their perception, they knew it wasn't gonna be ready on Monday because we had some equipment still on the property. Can you address what the equipment was doing there or when it was scheduled to be removed? And then we can talk about the pivot, which I think has been wise from all involved as to why we, if this construction equipment's still there.
Sure. So, we, we certainly did have excavating equipment, aerial lifts on-site in an effort to complete as much work as possible prior to final inspection. And there was a plan for specific areas that would require some temporary measures to be implemented to ensure level and safety grits from the building. Those are the things that, I guess, we dug up separately that we pivoted on. However, the, those pieces of equipment were intended to be there that long to put as much work in place prior to, to school start. So the sequence of events was coordinated that way specifically to ensure the proper work was put in place. uh, so that the school could look at that.
And I'm assuming in the conversations yesterday with the city building inspector, that was communicated that these five or six incidentals are part of Gilbain moving out of the building. Okay, so if, if we pivot, because the, the, the conversation will now turn to, well, you know, there's still construction equipment there. There was a decision made that some of the temporary, uh, work that we had scheduled to be done weeks, on weekends and, and over the next couple of months, once we were notified from the city building inspector, we weren't getting our occupancy from Oregon. Gilbain mobilized with colleagues, a team to come back in and say, okay, now we have another three or four days. Let's get some of these things done permanently so that we're not dealing with them two and three months down the road on weekend. Is that fair?
That is very fair.
So, you know, I, I don't know if, if this committee thought this meeting was going to be much longer than, than it is, but I, I think it's important that the community hears how this transpired. I think our team has explained that to my satisfaction. And, you know, again, to the Baldwin community, it is, it is unfortunate and it is frustrating. We hear you. But it has not been for a lack of ethic by anybody in this room. We have placed the health priority, the safety of our students, our staff at Winters, um, at the forefront. We continue to do that and I'm satisfied with where we are on this project. Given all the challenges that we all hear about, but we've lived it. This team has lived it for two years. And to have a three-school-day delay while, while disappointing, it is not the end of the world and it should not be categorized as such. And if the Winters community feels they need to blame somebody, they can blame me. I'm the chairman of the facilities committee and it happened under my watch, as I said earlier. So with that, I'm, I'm done. I, I, I appreciate what you guys have done and the, the level of dedication and care you've shown this district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charbonneau. Thank you for your leadership on the facilities subcommittee. I, you missed spoke right at the beginning and spoke to the Baldwin community. And, and I, and I understand why you made that mistake because the reason Winters can't go back to hold space is that we very quickly reoccupied our hold space with the Baldwin community because this facility subcommittee is actively working on our second ground-up build to follow our two gut remodel elementary schools. So that in the eight years I've been on this committee, we have delivered four state-of-the-art elementary schools to this community while also investing in all of our buildings, our bathrooms, our vestibule entrances, our fire safety. In these eight years, with Mr. Charbonneau chairing facilities, we invest in every single one of our buildings. And our students who went back to those fifteen buildings benefited from that. And I echo what Mr. Charbonneau said. I very much look forward to walking through our new Winters. I very much look forward to welcoming all the media to walk through the new Winters building, which that's those students deserve so much. And it was exciting to talk to all the teachers last Friday as they were setting up their classrooms. And after two years of a pandemic, which they weathered in the annex, which they weathered in hold space, they went through two tough years and before that were in a building that was not up to snuff for our students. And now they are walking into a state-of-the-art building. Mr. Knight, did you have something?
I have a question. How, is that building safe for students to be in right now?
Why that's a, um...
Yes or no? Really easy.
So I'm going to struggle with answering that only because of the battery test.
Forget the battery test. Battery test is, is for when power is out. Am I correct? Okay. We're not going to have school when power is out, are we?
Mr. Knight, can I rephrase the question? If power is on in that building, is it safe for students to be in that building?
Fire alarm will activate.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Nolo, did you have something else, Mr. Knight?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you rephrase my question?
Thank you.
Also say that it's safe though?
Uh, excuse me. Excuse me. Mr. Knight, did you have a question?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, so the building is safe. It is up to code as far as we know. And as far as everybody but the fire marshal knows. And I guess the city building inspector, um, officially decided to give us a temporary certificate of occupancy, I understand?
We do have a temporary certificate.
That allows certain people in there, but not, doesn't allow us to have...
Specifically.
Why would they do that?
We, I don't think we've answered that.
What's that?
I, I don't think we've answered that.
Have you ever had temporary building occupancy before?
Temporary certificates of occupancy are, are very common.
How long do they usually last?
It's the, um, this is September ninth.
Okay, so here's the other question. If this thing fails again next Saturday, are we going to have school next Tuesday?
So the, the rundown test, um, terminates at seven AM, um, Sunday, no, Saturday morning. If it were to fail and had to be retested again, we would have to go eighty-four hours from that. I do not anticipate that occurring based on what we've done. So it would have to be eighty-four, eighty-four hours from that time for a retest.
So now, here's the question. Double-sided to you. If in fact that does happen, do we have a clean ask for a fire watch and a generator to be brought onsite?
I'm sure it's all those discussions.
The mayor came up with that today on YouTube.
I'm not sure. I can, I can comment on that, but I would...
It must be his place to tell us. He told us on YouTube. If you don't know. Thank you.
So, I have a question for you first. What was it with the battery? You said there was something wrong with that, so whatever it was. Can you explain that, please?
So I am not an expert either. I will, I will give the exact words I was given. Inside of the fire alarm panel, there are a series of what are called dip switches that are associated with the programming of the battery. And one of the dip switches was in the wrong position during the rundown test, which causes the battery to drain down faster.
Oh, it's a tumble switch?
Sort of like a tumble switch, correct.
Okay, so it got put in the wrong position and that's what caused it. Now, when we have occupancy, who has access to that fire panel so we make sure that any of those dips sticks don't end up in the wrong place?
I believe the key is controlled by the fire department.
Okay, so...
I believe access to the fire panel is limited to the fire.
So as long as the test passed, then we should have no problems?
The panel is locked with a key and that key is put in the box box in the front of the building for the fire department to access.
Okay, perfect. So, that being said, I would like to extend my sincere apologies to the families of Henry J. Winters. Sixteen years ago, when I came on this committee, I was invited to a PTO meeting. And the first words out of my mouth were, why does your school smell? And the reason the school smelled is because it was old, because it was getting mold, because we had too many students cramped in an extremely small space. I have waited sixteen years for this. And I sincerely apologize that you had to wait three more days to get into your school. However, everything we have done at your old school and at the new school is to ensure your safety, the safety of the children of the city of Pawtucket. At no time in any of our schools have we willingly placed the jeopardy of our students, placed our children in jeopardy. So, please offer your understanding. We had a situation that we could not control.
Thank you, Mr. Charbonneau. Thank you.
Two quick things. One, twenty, did, were we able to gauge how long of a charge it held?
We, we could only estimate.
What was the estimation?
Approximately forty hours.
So we gave it about twenty hours?
Okay.
And just, um, speaking for myself, I, I want to acknowledge our, our, our city fire marshal who during my term as, as facilities chair and over the eight years on this school committee, has been a, an instrumental partner in helping us make, keep, and deliver on deadlines. And he has been flexible with his scheduling to come back numerous times on projects. And so I want, I want that on the record that, uh, he has been a, a champion of the work we're doing. I think largely in part because he believes in fire suppression and, and that's, we've been touching just about every school with fire suppression and fire alarms. And, and I want to make sure that, uh, he receives the credit that he deserves because he has been an advocate for, for the work we did.
I know Mr. Knight brought it up earlier and Mr. Charbonneau just touched on it, but I know that I have spoken before because, um, like every time one of these fire alarm systems comes up, I, I, you know, it's, it's something that the community doesn't realize we're doing because it does, you can't see it. But, um, we have been investing money in all of our schools to ensure that they have the sprinkler systems, the fire alarm systems that they need. And as Mr. Charbonneau said, with the partnership of the fire marshal. And I appreciate that they also are now coming in on Saturday of Labor Day weekend to ensure that we can have this building open on time. Uh, Mr. Knight?
Yeah. Um, so, thank you. Um, so all eight items on the, um, the, um, is there all, it's all, is that accurate? Um, so in, um, um, so in the... Um, so in the, um, um, strange event that we, that we are unable to open on the sixth, we have a, um... And I keep, um, the superintendent...
Yes, um, thank you, dear, for, for Mr. Marino. I would like to say first of all, in the event that that were to happen and we weren't to receive a certificate of occupancy on Saturday, that means that we do not fully have control of the building. So we would have to, um, as far as a plan of action. Uh, the plan of action in my, um, belief was yesterday when I looked frankly at the inspector and asked for a TCO, which is a temporary certificate of occupancy with a fire watch. And I was told solidly, no. That would be the plan. If this were to fail, of course, I do agree with, um, Tony Gil, from Gilbain, that the expectation is that, uh, the problem in the board is fixed and we will receive that CO when they notify me first thing on Saturday that they are there and they received it. Then I'll be pushing up that messaging and we will have a wonderful opening day for Tuesday. But like I said, in the event of that not happening, Mr. Marino, then the plan would be for the mayor to step up in due, as he stated on YouTube, and allow us a temporary certificate of occupancy with the fire watch.
Yes, Mr. Charbonneau?
I think as we explain the fire watch again, this would be, a, as I offered up as a, a solution, four firefighters, an apparatus, twenty-four seven, watching the building at the school department expense. And this is a, a fire watch. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we've had these in other buildings within the district in the eight years I've been on the school. I believe we had it at Shea. I believe we had it at Slater. So I, I just wanted, that was something that had slipped my mind earlier. But I believe we've had fire watches prior.
I see no further questions from anyone on the committee. Um, I want to thank the team. I want to thank my fellow committee members. And as others have done, I want to speak to the, um, Henry J. Winters community and say that it's a beautiful building. It's going to serve your community for years and years to come. It's going to be a gem. People are going to come from all different communities as they come to our other buildings to see what good construction looks like. And I would like to say that in a time when all we talk about is how projects are going to cost so much more than we expected, this was delivered on budget, this new school building. And I very much, I would have missed the opening because my own children had their first day of school and I was with them. And, but I will be there at Henry J. Winters on Tuesday. And I very much look forward to welcoming in the families. I see no further, Mr. Knight?
You just asked if they've got any more, anything else they want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Anything to add from our colleagues and Gilbain team?
Yeah, not, yeah, not from us either.
Thank you.
Just thank you for your support.
Thank you.
We're delighted to have you in the school.
And I know that this hasn't just been a winter summer. We have had projects at all of our schools practically. Um, it's been busy with roofs being done, um, and siding and media centers and lighting. And it just has been a busy, busy summer. It's the way that Pawtucket works. We continue to invest in our schools. So thank you for being our partners in that. Motion adjourned by Mr. Charbonneau, seconded by Ms. Benello. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Uh, we're adjourned at six forty-eight. Thank you.